Evening, please bear with us as we end our closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve Certificate 1516-5 for the closed session?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Miller-Richards, seconded by Ms. Ream. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Reverend Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller-Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes. Next, we have approval of the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda to include an additional information item, 8E1, for an update on the original Walker Grant renovation project. May I have a motion to approve our agenda as amended this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Miller-Richards. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 5th, 2015 Regular School Board Meeting and the October 15th Special School Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller-Richards, moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Miller-Richards. Are there any changes or discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we come to the favorite part of the meeting, the recognitions. We will start with the Word of the Month, Honesty, to be presented by Lafayette Upper Elementary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Mrs. Catlett, and our houseful of families and guests and students. Lafayette is always very excited to present the Word of the Month, and tonight it's my honor and privilege to bring up Mrs. Celia Oakley, who's one of our teachers, our gifted teacher at Lafayette, and she will present our students for tonight for the Word of the Month. Thank you for this opportunity, and here's Mrs. Oakley.
Good evening. These students are going to come up now. And I'm going to just briefly introduce them. They've been working hard on a skit for you about honesty. And when I say your name, just step forward. Morgan Smith, Keiko Huff, Peyton Billingsley, Eric Marte, Jackson Billingsley, Gin Huff, and Simon Young. And they're going to present their honesty skit for you.
Honesty is when you speak the truth and act truthfully. An honest person does not do things that are morally wrong. If something you do is breaking the law, you find it because you get in trouble, you're probably not even honest.
What is honesty? Honesty is in what you say. Honesty means you don't say things about people that are true. You're not being honest if you make out rumors about someone.
Being honest means you admit to your actions even if you get in trouble. You're not being honest if you deny you did something wrong and you really did it.
Honesty means explaining how a situation really happened. You are not being honest if you say something in one way or it always happens another way. What is being honest?
A good part of honesty is what you say and how you act towards others. But another part of the definition of honesty is whether you treat yourself the same way. Being honest with yourself conceiving that while you're acting in a certain way, no wonder what you tell yourself is true. You are not being honest with yourself if you admit to yourself you did really do something wrong, but it wasn't that bad, you know that you were right.
What is honesty in this situation? You broke the table. Your mom asked you to break the table and you tell her you did it.
You break the table.
Honest answer. Honesty means telling the truth, admitting to breaking the table with the honest actions. What is honesty in this situation?
You really want to play with friends to win your house, so you slip to your backpack and figure you'll go to bed tomorrow.
Honest answer. Taking something that is not worth it morally wrong is dishonest. Asking to buy the toy is honest.
Can I buy this toy tomorrow?
Okay.
What is honesty in this situation? You hurt or you think it's not true.
So you don't spread it.
Honesty answer. Spreading rumors isn't the next thing to do when you're true or not. If you spread rumors, then you're just being very false than you are being. This is the worst thing in the world.
What is honesty in this situation?
Your dad says not to play your game play.
Don't play your game play.
Hide in the closet to play it, but you don't tell your dad about it so you don't lie.
Honest answer. Even if you don't get caught, so you don't speak lies about what you did, thinking hide your ass from your games means you're not making an honest choice.
Let them hear you.
What is honesty in this situation?
Went to Joey's to play, then you went to Austin's without asking.
When your dad asks, which house did you play at today? You say, I played at Joey's.
Honesty answer. Hiding the truth, conceiving is dishonest. Being honest means telling the whole truth.
I played at Joey's and Austin's with dad.
It's okay, but thank you for being honest.
Honesty is important for self-respect and respect of others. Honesty creates a valued life.
Yeah. That was a lot too.
Good evening, Madam Chair Green, Mrs. Catlett, board members and guests, and I will warn you all now, I will not be as entertaining as that group. Thank you. School Board members are required to participate annually in highly qualified, high-quality professional development activities at the state, local, and national levels on governance, including personnel, policies and practices, curriculum and instruction, use of data, and planning and decision-making, and current issues in education as part of their service on the local school board. The V S B A School Board Academy offers a comprehensive program of orientation and education specifically designed for local school boards. Through participation in the V S B A Academy, board members have the chance to meet with fellow board members across the state to share ideas and solutions. Members become more knowledgeable about educational issues and learn to effectively fulfill responsibilities as a board member. School Board members earn Academy credits through participation in V S B A meetings and other Academy sessions through V S B A governance and service activities. They are awarded various levels of Academy Awards based on credits earned over a two-year period. Please join me in congratulating our Academy Award participants. Receiving the award of achievement and a bronze V S B A pin, Ms. Melvina Kay and Mrs. Barbara Miller-Richards. Receiving an award of excellence and silver V S B A pin, Mrs. Patricia Green and Mrs. Receiving an award of distinction and distinctive starfish pin, Reverend Jarvis Bailey, Mrs. Janet Holmes, and Dr. David Melton.
And now, we have Hugh Mercer, Ms. Hankusley.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chairperson Green, board members, Deputy Superintendent Catlett, families and friends. It's my pleasure to introduce the first and second place Pumpkin Run winners for this year. We'll begin with first place, and we'll begin with girls. Let's recognize Holly Roland. Holly, is the, I don't know if she's here tonight, Holly, are you here? Okay, Holly, come on down. There she is. Holly is the daughter of Mr. Thomas Roland and Mrs. Nancy Roland, and her teacher is Mrs. Saunders. Let's give her a big round of applause. Next, we'll recognize the Pumpkin Run winner in the boys category, and that is Griffin Van Sant. And I did see Griffin. Come on down, Griffin. Griffin is the son of John Van Sant and Mrs. Maggie Van Sant, and his teacher is Mrs. Christie. Picture. Got to get the picture. Good job. Congratulations. And our second place girl is Shabnum Fanu, daughter of Mr. Ziadun Fanu and Mrs. Habiba Fanu, and her teacher is Mrs. Porcelli. Here's Shabnum. Got it. And our second place boy is Craig Boltie, and I saw Craig earlier. Craig is the son of Mr. Craig Boltie and Mrs. Jacqueline Boltie. He is in Mrs. Saunders' second grade class.
Good evening, once again. I saw them practice that about two or three times, and I just want to say how proud I am of the students who did our presentation again tonight. That was even 1,000 times better than before. I'm also very proud of our fifth graders, and these fifth graders are being recognized for being elected to the, for the 2015-2016 Student Council Association at Lafayette. And I will start with the position of historian. Our member-at-large for historian is Emily Brown, and she's the daughter of Brian and Our historian this year is Morgan Smith, and that's the daughter of Larry Smith and Our member-at-large position for the treasurer position was Katie Boyd, the daughter of Matthew and Jennifer Boyd. And our treasurer this year at Lafayette is Jake Hatton, the son of Dennis and Monica Jake, Jake, come get your fries, buddy. Come get your stiff. Our secretary member-at-large this year is Scarlett Allen, the daughter of Cliff Allen Our secretary is Tyson Taylor, the son of Dean and Sierra Taylor. Our vice president member-at-large is Ashley Schaffner, the daughter of Frederick and Catherine Our vice president this year is Gillian Batista, the daughter of Daniel Lee. And finally, for our president position, our member-at-large for president is Denia And finally, our president this year for Lafayette is Tessa Bear, the son of Brian Lafayette would like to continue our recognitions tonight with our winners for the Pumpkin Fun Run we continue to run, and we had this on October 26th. I will start with our third grade boys. Our second place winner this year was Michael Edwards, the son of Ms. Michelle Edwards. Our first place winner in third grade for the boys was McLean Maynor, and that's the son of Mark and Christy Maynor. Our girls in third grade, our second place winner was Sophia Coulon, the daughter of Our first place winner for the girls' third grade was Addison Howe, the daughter of In fourth grade, our boys' second place winner was Avery Forsman, the son of Ed Forsman And in fourth grade, the boys' first, he has his stickers on today because his dad was our watchdog's dad. He's had a nice long day. Our first place winner for boys' fourth grade was Nathan Sharp, the son of Brian and Carrie Moving on, our fourth grade girls, our second place winner was Krista David, the daughter In first place, the fourth grade girls was Cecilia Lucas, the daughter of Mark and Marjorie And our fifth grade winners for boys, our second place was Zachary Horn, the son of And in first place this year for boys' fifth grade was Tyson Taylor, the son of Dean and Our fifth grade girls this year, our second place winner was Gillian Batista, daughter And our first place fifth grade girls' winner was Sarah Gahl, the daughter of Ricardo and Thank you for your patience with that. We appreciate your time, and Lafayette, proud of all of you students, thank you for coming. I'd like to bring up Dr. Melanie K. Wyatt, the principal of Walker Grant Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you some tigerific tigers from Walker Grant Middle School. We will begin with our James Farmer Scholars. Each year, seventh grade students are selected to participate in the James Farmer Program, which is a part of the University of Mary Washington, and each year they are selected based on their academic potential, test scores, recommendations, and written essay. The program provides academic enrichment, tutoring, extracurricular activities, and preparation for college. They are under the direction of their sponsor, who's with us tonight, Mrs. Demetrius Silver. So thank you for all of your work, Ms. Silver. The following students were, sorry. The following students were inducted this year as seventh graders. We'll begin with Tatia Batiste, daughter of Mr. Charles Batiste and Ms. Melissa Batiste. Next, we have Kayla Clingstale, daughter of Mr. Brian King and Mrs. Lamars Lewis King. Is she with us this evening? Well, let's give her a round of thanks. Tanai Jones, daughter of Mr. Gilbert Jones and Mrs. Rakita Jones. Saif Mubashar, son of Mr. Minhas Mubashar and Ms. Sadia Rafi. Harmonay Newman, daughter of Mr. Terrence Newman and Mrs. Adrian Gray. Tricia Lee Nguyen, daughter of Mr. Tai Nguyen and Ms. Tram Lee. Alex Ninjimbawi, son of Ms. Astrid Mahash. Monjarette Sanderball, daughter of Ms. Arias Salazar. Kadiah Ursery is the daughter of Ms. Latisha Spire. She could not be with us tonight. And also Jamil Peace, son of Ms. Jazelle Peace, could not be with us tonight, but we do have one more James Farmer recognition, and that's Andrew Williams, son of Mr. Andre Congratulations to our scholars. And now for our Student Council Association officers for this school year. They are sponsored by Ms. Destiny Getheart and Ms. Tiffany Spagnolo. Thank you for all of your work, ladies, that you do with our students. Our historian for this year is Nellie Kate Dameron. She's the daughter of Ms. Delene Dameron and Ms. Haley Dameron. Our treasurer this year is Sarah Marchowski, daughter of Ms. Igor Marchowski and Mrs. Mila Our secretary for this year is Dagney Oakley, daughter of Ms. Cecilia Oakley. We've got a fun bunch this year to work with. All right, our vice president is Ms. Claire Brady, daughter of Mr. Brent Brady and Mrs. And our president for this year is Evan Batista, daughter of Mr. Daniel Batista and Congratulations to all of our students, and thank you to our sponsors for this coming school year.
Congratulations to everyone. It was a great turnout. Thank you all for doing the show and supporting our award winners. If you'd like to, but otherwise, have a good time.
We now return to our meeting, hearing of citizens. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? We move to the consent agenda. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the consent agenda, which includes head start approvals, additional extracurricular activities for 2015, 2016 for Walker Grant Middle School.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Ream. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now go to personate. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now go to personnel.
I recommend that the board approve the personnel list as revised.
May I have a motion to approve the deputy superintendent's recommendation?
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, seconded by Reverend Bailey. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Miller Richards?
Yes.
And Ms. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Ream?
Yes.
Next, we have policy revisions, first reading.
I recommend that the board approve the policy revisions as provided by the Virginia School Board Association Policy Services on first reading.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Ream, seconded by Reverend Bailey. Any discussions?
I have a point of order.
Okay.
I noticed that in that first reading, there was an area called community uses of facilities. And given the issues that we've been dealing with related to the original Walker Grant, I did not want to, or maybe I need clarification, in terms of how those changes affect the rights or the privileges that the school board awarded Walker Grant Alumni Association, given that Walker Grant was the school that they have attended. And I didn't want that to get lost in this first reading under community uses. So
Dr. Gordon?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Ms. Kay, there's a great point that you bring up. Those revisions were actually created by Dr. Melton, Brad King, and myself. And it will not affect the Walker Grant Alumni Association's usage of the original Walker Grant building at all.
Okay.
One of the things that we've had completed over the last probably three to four weeks to make sure that we had an active calendar that was given to us by the Walker Grant Alumni Association, by Ms. Steicheneg, Ms. Woodward, and Xavier Richardson, to make sure that a lot of the events that have occurred, about all the events that have occurred over the last 10 to 20 years will continue to occur.
Great.
We just wanted to make sure that we wouldn't be specific on any other details regarding technicians, just to make sure we have consistency throughout the entire school division.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And all board members did receive copies of those forms?
Yes.
Okay. We'll return to the, we have a motion and we have a second. Needs to be unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now go to information items. We have an instructional presentation, instructional coaches, professional learning community, Dr. Thomas.
This is Fiddler. Thank you, school board members, for having us tonight. My name is Tristan Fiddler, and I'm the new teacher advisor for Fredericksburg City Public Schools. And I believe we're way to, can we go ahead and excuse me, you all? I thought he was going to click it on. Thank you. Presenting with me tonight, we have Melanie Knuckles, who's a literacy coach from Hugh Mercer, Sarah Cook, math specialist at Lafayette, Emily Heller, math specialist at Walker Grant. We are the Fredericksburg City Public Schools Instructional Coaches, Professional Learning Community, or part of the IC PLC, as we like to call ourselves. Tonight, we are going to briefly tell you who we are, how we began, and where we are going, what we are, and why we are. We hope that through this presentation, you will have a better understanding of how we, as instructional coaches, connect the pieces within our school system. Our group consists of members from Hugh Mercer, Lafayette, Walker Grant, James Monroe, and Central Office. As you can see, we have a variety of instructional coaches represented in our group, including reading specialists, math specialists, and a new teacher advisor. Joining our group this year will be the IB coordinators at James Monroe and Walker Grant as well. We have several members in our audience tonight, so I would like to take a moment to recognize them. If they will please stand, they are Tricia Lawless, Danielle Doolan, Pam Douglas, and Quincy Clip. We have to mention one more of our members of our group, Lori McCullough. Lori is the Virginia School Curriculum and Development Executive Director, and she is the School Curriculum and Development Executive Director and is an educational leader in the state of Virginia, where she has a very strong background in instructional coaching. We are truly fortunate to have her as our IC PLC mentor. Okay, now that you know who we are, we want to explain how we began and where we are going. Almost two years ago, in February of 2014, several of us attended a coaching workshop that was led by our now mentor, Lori McCullough. The idea to continue collaborating on a regular basis was born, and planning began in earnest to develop a professional learning community. Later that spring, in May of 2014, we invited Lori to attend our Instructional Coaches PLC kickoff, where we met for the first time as a whole group and began to draft our mission statement and plan. Since the beginning of the following school year, 2014, 2015, we have been meeting quarterly and sometimes more frequently. In that first year, we focused on developing an IC PLC plan, which you'll hear more about in a minute. And we are now, this year and moving forward, beginning the process of developing a division-wide coaching model. Overall, having the opportunity to collaborate across the division has proved beneficial to each of us in our individual roles.
As Emily mentioned, in defining what we are, we have written an IC PLC plan, which is the guiding document for our group. It contains our mission statement and four objectives. You'll notice that our mission statement echoes the district's mission statement with an emphasis on excellence in education. We truly believe that through our professional collaboration and sharing of best practices, we are promoting high levels of student achievement in our schools. In order to implement our vision, we have four main goals centered around fostering professional growth, developing a division-wide coaching model, providing a platform for collaboration, and advocating for positive professional relationships across the division.
So far, we've talked about who we are, how we began, where we're going, and what we're about. Now, let's talk about why we are the IC PLC. While we all have different titles, have different reports to different supervisors, work in different buildings, and specialize in different content areas, we all are committed. We're committed to developing and using an FCPS coaching model. This coaching model will allow us or serve as a tool for promoting positive relationships, professional growth, and student achievement. When you think about this coaching model, just look at it as a framework, which will guide us in helping teachers translate research into practice. Why are we? Here's an interesting piece of information that was shared with us at a recent coaching workshop that also helps explain why we are. This landmark study was conducted over a five-year period, looking at staff development in California. And according to this research, when teachers were given a description of new instructional skills, 10% used the skills in the classroom. When you look at the workshops, modeling, practice, and feedback, when they were added to training, teacher implementation of the teaching practice increased 2% to 3% each time. In contrast, the same model of professional development, when paired with peer coaching, can yield up to a 95% transfer into the classroom. And you can see from this study, 95% of the teachers implemented the new skills in their classrooms as a result of the support from a coach. By partnering traditional professional development opportunities with teachers, along with the support of instructional coach, research shows an increased rate on return of your investment. Coaching that focuses on helping teachers implement new practices leads to implementation in the classroom and more bang for your bucks. And as a result, you can anticipate an increase in student achievement, other benefits for our students, as well as an increase in teacher effectiveness, a positive impact on teacher beliefs, and increase in reflective thinking and collaboration among teachers, just to name a few.
Thank you again, school board members, for having us tonight. We hope our presentation has been informative. And we look forward to continuing to grow as coaches and as a professional learning community. In closing, instructional coaching does not have to be puzzling. It's a piece of the puzzle that promotes positive relationships, professional growth, and achievement.
Are there any questions or discussion?
As you've heard, board members, Deputy Superintendent Catlett guessed, instructional coaching represents best practice. That sentiment is supported by organizations such as VASCD, which our own Dr. White represents, ASCD. And this group has done tremendous work in terms of formalizing instructional coaching, in terms of the elements of the PLC model here in this division. I'd like to especially thank Tristan Fiddler for her leadership and Emily Heller for her leadership in facilitating this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't leave. Don't leave. Yeah, I did, well, first of all, I really liked the dollar graphic. That was kind of fun. But also, so just to, so I understand a little better, you're, are you coaching when the research, you're translating the research into practice? But are you doing this for all teachers or just specifically targeted teachers that it pertains to? Who's getting coached?
Okay, well, in my situation, I work with brand-new teachers.
Right.
I definitely have teachers who are just new to our system, but specifically brand-new teachers. So those are ones with whom I am working.
Right.
Sarah, Melanie, did you all, Melanie, do you all add to this?
Well, I can speak, I think we all have a little bit of a different role, but
Okay.
I'm a math specialist and at Walker Grant, I actually target our whole math department and every special education teacher that works in a math classroom through PLCs and is working with them individually and as groups.
Okay, thanks.
So essentially, the coaching represents advising teachers on the most effective elements of pedagogy in the classroom. And so, these teachers work with, these coaches, rather, work with staff in a nonevaluative manner. Of course, administrative staff here, we serve in a supervisory capacity. So essentially, when we observe teachers and so forth, primarily, I guess, it's done in a formal capacity. We do conduct walkthrough observations that are informal, but they are essentially snapshots. So these individuals are able to work with staff members, provide feedback on instructional practice in the classroom, again, in a way that's nonevaluative. They do so in a manner that's confidential. Cases with Tristan and the new teachers, they work with the teachers and they maintain a high level of confidentiality. Oftentimes, we will have conversations about how staff members are doing. We don't share names. She essentially just reports back on areas that are working well, areas that need to be improved. And the rest of the coaches assembled here do so in a similar capacity with staff members who are veteran teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm really excited to know that we are providing support and ongoing professional training for you all, so you're bringing the most up-to-date information to our teachers. I mean, that's terrific. That's a lot of extra work for you all, but it's good to know that that's going on in our classrooms and our teachers have access to that.
Yeah, I think this year, we have just about the entire group going to VASCD. We've got members of this group also that are going to be entering a literacy specialist cohort offered by the University of Mary Washington. You all, Dr. Melton, Deputy Superintendent Catlett, are supporting these individuals with their coursework and so forth, so they receive a literacy specialist endorsement or a master's degree. So, yeah, the support's been tremendous.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. It's wonderful when teachers have that extra support. Everybody can use it, and it helps the team. Thank you. We go to financial report. Mr. Baker was not feeling well, and he was unable to attend tonight's meeting. The budget status report for September 30th, 2015 is provided for your review. If anyone has any questions, please contact Mr. Baker at a later date. Okay? We're moving on to old business. Oh, I'm sorry, update on original Walker Grant renovation project. Dr. Gordon.
All right, good evening again. Ladies and gentlemen, this is one of the most exciting times in Fredericksburg City Public School history. And it's been a long time coming.
Yes.
We have officially began the process for our 20-month project for the renovation of the original Walker Grant School. This past Friday, we had our first programming meeting, which was also attended by Deputy Superintendent Catlett, Ms. Holmes, Ms. Ream, Doug Westmoreland, who was our chief architect, the Mozy Architecture. Also, want to give a public special thank you to Ms. Pam Steicheneg and Ms. Nancy Woodward for all their support, because those are two of the main groups of people that this affects the most. So as we look at going down the road, we have two additional programming meetings tomorrow, one at 1:00 and one at 3:00. As we begin the entire process of looking at our school board office space, as well as our instructional programs within the building. This will be the feature of us moving on to our next stage of actually, the concept phase is what we're in right now. But moving on to the design phase, we will have selected members from the community, from our instructional staff, currently at original Walker Grant, some of our central office staff, as we begin to put together some of the details for this project. The project will officially commence with construction beginning probably around last week of December, first week of January. And it will be 20 months for the completion, expected to be August 31 of 2017. Our construction project is actually broken down into three phases. The first phase lasting about eight months, kind of very tied to the second phase as well, where we will deal with approximately 70% of the building, mainly from the gymnasium going to the side, through the community meeting area, first floor, second floor, et cetera. We have worked very, very hard with the support of our school board office and our city council to make sure that this project was going to move forward. Dr. Melton, Deputy Superintendent Catlett, and myself had a very productive meeting with the Walker Grant Alumni Association. It's going to be our chief goal and responsibility to make sure that we really show the heritage and tradition of that building. So it's going to be our plan for us to have display cases throughout the entire building, showing all the years of the great tradition that we've had at Walker Grant. As a note to the public, probably within the next month, we are going to have a Walker Grant auction, where some of the lockers that are in the building, where some of the chairs that are actually in the auditorium, will be on sale. We'll determine what that price will be at a later date, and want to make sure it's going to be affordable for everyone. But at the same time, it may be used to supplement some of the different things that we have to do in order to make sure that our Head Start and early childhood special education programs and Virginia preschool initiatives still are able to operate fully during this renovation. It's going to be a challenge, but we are going to get it done, and we are so excited about this opportunity to have it for Fredericksburg City Public Schools.
Great.
Are there any questions?
Questions or comments?
We're excited, too.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And as we've reminded people, if you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to call someone and get the truth. It really helps when we're doing a project like this that has so much input from so many community groups. So please don't hesitate to call somebody if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you. We go to old business. VSBA Take Your Legislator to School Month is November. We have visits scheduled for Senator Bryce Reeves on November 17th at 10:30 a.m. and Delegate William Howell on November 24th at 10 a.m. We are planning to take them on a tour of the original Walker Grant and show them what wonderful things we're planning on doing. Spotsylvania Joint Legislative Reception Spotsylvania Joint Legislative Reception is December 1st, 2015, 6:30 p.m. This is the Spotsylvania County School Board has invited us to participate. It's their third annual joint legislative reception, and it has been rescheduled to December 1st. If you plan on going, please let Ms. Wright know. It will be in the meeting room of the Administrative Services Building in Spotsylvania. Any questions, concerns? American Education Week is going to be observed November 16th through the 20th, 2015. Questions or concerns? The annual VSBA Conference is November 18th through the 20th. All board members are planning to attend. Remember, you have a 5K registration, which is available online if anybody is interested in participating. Any questions? That's an early one.
We need new shoes.
Yep. We sure do.
Oh, yeah, we do.
New business.
Madam Chair, this.
Oh, I'm sorry, we were going to do this on the legislative, I'm sorry, thank you.
So, at the VSBA Annual Conference, we also have a legislative session, and that's when the Virginia School Board Association decides on what their legislative issues are going to be moving forward for that year. So, this year, they have nine new ones. Some are amended, some are brand-new. And I get to cast the vote for our school board this year. So, I have, a couple of them had to do with assessment. So I talked to Ms. Brighty about those. A couple of them had to do with the VRS, and I talked to Mr. Baker about those and the composite index. So, they all look like they're, they're good things that we would want. But if any of the board members have questions about them, please call me ahead of time. And we all have access to it online for all of the things.
But essentially, you'll be voting to support.
I will.
Okay.
Unless I hear otherwise, unless people have any major objections.
Any questions, comments? We move on to new business. Any other new business? Ms. Holmes, you attended the IB workshop?
Ms. Ream.
Ms. Ream.
Yes. Ms. Holmes did not.
And you said it was very informative?
It was very informative. It was an all-day discussion with experienced IB facilitators, who gave us a lot of nuts and bolts about how it works and a lot of things that they had seen work and not work. So it was very, it was very informative. Got a lot out of it. Thank you for sending me.
Good of the order.
We had, you know, our choral concerts and band concerts, and I only made the chorus concert, but I know some people made the other ones. And I just wanted to commend our fine arts department for even having these concerts this early in the fall. I know a lot of other schools don't do anything until holiday time. So I think it's wonderful for our students to have the opportunity to perform anytime they get the opportunity. So I just wanted to say, do a shout-out.
It's so great that it's grown over the years. And we've done it instructionally and discipline-wise, but we're also doing it through the arts. I mean, for the choral teachers at James Monroe and Walker Grant work so well together, the band folks, the orchestra, it's really a neat evening. And I like the way they've exploded up for those parents, so we don't have to sit through hours. You can, you know, go one band night, or you can go two nights or three nights if you choose. But it makes it an enjoyable event, and there's enough seating for everyone that way as well.
Thank you. Are there any comments, other comments for good of the order? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Reverend Bailey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.